All right, we call a meeting to order. Stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now entertain a motion to clear open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries. The Open Meetings Act is posted on the doorway back there if you can read through that. Roll call, champs.
Yeah.
Tim?
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Myself here and Jim is just used. Uh, first thing we'll do is approve the agenda as stated. It looks like our presenters are here so we don't have to move anywhere else.
I guess I would say your student presentation. Allison was sick today, so she sent Kiana and Claire, so they will provide the student presentation.
Thanks for volunteering, girls. Okay, unless anybody has anything, we'll approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Oh, the consent agenda, start out with the minutes from last month. Questions on that or corrections? I didn't see any. Maybe we should give a prize for anybody that can find something wrong. That would be at least read through. I'm just gonna let Noah decide.
Cloud cash.
Cloud cash. Okay, if nobody has anything on that, I'll go on to the financial reports. Nothing's been read yet, I think, in this. Should cancel this, maybe a little more ice just there. Yeah, nothing on that, a little claims. Light pole gets reimbursed, correct?
Yes.
Yep, that check has probably already been deposited as well, so that's a wash on that top flame expenditure.
Reimbursed.
Door.
Hate to see the propane bill in the greenhouse when it gets cold next week.
See it next month.
No questions on that? I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated. So moved. Second. First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, number eight, student presentation.
Okay, so every week on Thursday, we do high school headlines and then it gets to go on 106 kicks. And Dr. Arl's always nice and he provides us snacks and yeah.
And we're also attending because it is a government class requirement.
What time is that, girls, on Monday?
Three fifty.
About three fifty, 106 kicks. And who's on the team?
Um, Claire and I, Allison, Lauren, Tanner, and Leighton.
You just do that over a phone?
Yep, we record it and then send to Abe Schreiner for 106 kicks.
Okay, thank you for coming, girls. Or staying, I should say. Okay, we'll move on. Is there any public comments tonight? Talk. Okay. Move on to discussion items. Uh, legislative preview from Senator Larry Berry to Kay. Thank you for coming tonight, crappy weather.
Well, thank you for having me. We have a little bit of pea-suit fog coming down, but that's not bad. It's not ice yet out there, so we're in good shape. But anyway, I'll start out by saying, um, good batter in between. I was educated by three former educators here at Plainview High School back in, when I was in high school. Wanda and Gail Retzloff and Don Tazmeyer were coaches and teachers of mine up at Lynch, Nebraska. But on a little more serious deals, um, what I'm running for, why I run was to enhance the lives of, uh, young kids in the state of Nebraska, try to recruit, retain young kids, young families into the rural sectors of Nebraska to, um, try and enhance main streets in towns like Plainview, Hardyton, Nybrow, wherever, and keep our rural schools open. And I'll be, a lot of things that I'm going to be, uh, working with and have been talking to people about. Uh, number one, and that's on everybody's, uh, to-do list, is to work on the tax reform and how we can, uh, better facilitate getting our taxes lowered. And part of that is going to be, uh, in order to shrink the tax base, we're gonna have to shrink the budget somehow and cut out some wasteful spending. And we're gonna have to generate other, um, types of revenue in the state to bring, um, our tax base down. Um, there's a lot of things out there that are on the burner right now that we can work with, but, uh, we'll be working on that going forward. And, uh, there'll be significant changes, I think, in the next year, two years or so going forward. Uh, they did very good with, uh, getting LB-873 off the ground last year with property taxes and stuff. And so that's a good starting point, but there's still a lot of work to do. It's not a one-time fix. It's gonna be continuous. There, we're always gonna be tweaking the system to try to make things better. But we're in, I'm gonna be looking at, um, number one, we got to keep being, have money available to educate our kids. And that's part of what I run for. And we need to educate our kids, try to give them the best opportunities going forward. So how we can get that and where we can, um, keep our money coming into the school systems without being detrimental to, to the schools, um, that'd be something that'd be a hard look at. Other things I've been talking about is, uh, rural broadband, and that's part of it with my stance going forward. I think we need to enhance rural broadband throughout the whole state. There are pockets that have great rural bu, uh, internet. There's pockets in the state that have almost absolutely none. So in order to get young families, uh, kids back in the communities, we've got to have a strong rural broadband system throughout the state. Um, other things that working with, um, last year I did testify on a bill for then-Senator Flood, uh, LB-1247, to expand Highway 81 from Norfolk to Yankton to a four-lane highway. That's something, the infrastructure, part of it that I'm gonna be working on. Uh, there's gonna be some fights going forward and that because there's other projects in and around the Lincoln, Omaha area that are wanting to, um, take off and, but I, I think it's imperative that we work on that highway to the east of here. We, for, for no other reason, we have four to five deaths a year on that highway. And it's, uh, almost obsolete. Our farm equipment's gotten bigger, campers, boats, trucks, everything's gotten bigger. It's narrow, it's hilly, and, uh, people get in a hurry and all of a sudden you're bottlenecked. And, uh, people are trying to pass four or five vehicles at a time, and that's where we get in trouble. And you're coming up on blind intersections like the one right east of Crofton where you got a hill right to the south of that that doesn't, if a car's driving sixty-five, seventy miles an hour, it sometimes isn't gonna hap, and it has happened, it isn't gonna happen to slow down. So the infrastructure is part of what I'm gonna be working with. And, um, one of the other things is economic development. We've, uh, throughout, uh, the campaign season, I saw, walking the main streets of towns, there's a lot of small boutiques, antique shops and stuff that are opening up. I think they can be self-sustained if we get people coming through the state. Um, the Star Wars project up at Lewis and Clark and up at Nybrow is gonna be very beneficial to northeast Nebraska. Uh, obviously Nebraska is not gonna be a destination place like Mount Rushmore, but for people going through the state, I'd like to be able to entice people to stay in Lewis and Clark, Nybrow, and Ponca State Park and spend a day or two boating, golfing, spending some money in the towns and helping those rural communities out. So those are about four or five of the things that I've got on my, um, plate. It's not all gonna happen in one year. The Highway 81 project won't get done while I'm in legislature. It takes five years to even get it on, on the docket to start working on itself. But I'd like to have it on the project list going forward so it is completed. And we need to complete those projects between Norfolk and Fremont and Columbus and Fremont so we could start on this project. Nebraska's the only state in the United States that doesn't have a four-lane or an interstate going north and south throughout the state. So I think it's imperative for commerce, tourism, and everything else that we try to complete that project. Other things that I, you know, it's a, I'm learning this very political, even trying to get on the committees you wanna get on. Uh, my first priority of getting on a committee will be natural resources. I've dealt with that committee before in the past, being part of Nebraska Public Power, Nebraska Rural Electric. Uh, that's where my strengths have, have been in the past. I understand, uh, natural resources, dealing with different water issues. And there's gonna be water issues coming forward as far as quantity and quality both. So there's gonna be a lot of, uh, a lot of things take place. So hopefully I can land a spot on Natural Resources Committee. The other committees I'd like to be on if I could would be, um, Transportation and Telecommunications because that deals directly with the highway system that I was talking about and rural broadband. And then, uh, being fourth-generation cow cap operator from up at, uh, Weston, Nybrow, I'd like to be on the ag committee. But, um, chances of me getting on all three of those committees right now are gonna be almost impossible. Hopefully I can get on two of the four, uh, three I mentioned, and the fourth one would probably be banking. And it's just a chess game where they, where the committee chairs and the committee committee, um, decides to put you. So it's gonna be, as has been, like drinking from a fire hose, and they were right about that since the election. I've been to a lot of different meetings with Carney, Lincoln, um, I've put a lot of miles on the vehicle, but, uh, visiting with Farm Bureau, visiting with Nebraska Calamity, visiting with Nebraska Rural Electric. Uh, so that, I've been visiting throughout the district with different superintendents from the district to see where we are on, um, how we're gonna fund schools going forward so it's fair and equitable for everybody involved. Uh, so it's a, it's a good, it's a job. It's gonna be, um, a little bit of a life change, it's a new chapter. Um, I'll be living in Lincoln four day, at least four days a week, starting in January. So, um, hiring the staff is a little bit new for me. Hiring a hired man for farms is a little bit different than hiring a legislative aide or an administrative aide. So it's, it's been, um, work in progress, but it's been good. And I'm, I'm excited, looking forward to it. And I can't promise the world, I'll just promise that I'll work as hard as I can every day. And when it comes to who our governor is, uh, Jim Pillen, I've known Jim for three or four years. People have asked me, um, about that a little bit, and I said, I know Jim, I like Jim. And I will, as a senator, I'll work as hard as I can to make him be the best governor he can be for the state of Nebraska. And I think he has the potential to be a great, great one for us. So that's a little bit about where I'm at. If you had any questions, I'd try to answer anything for you. Other than that, um, that's a little bit of what I've been up to. Lot of miles, campaign, during the campaign season from Ponca to Stewart. Um, I put, from January to November, I put a little over twenty-five thousand miles on one vehicle and probably a total of about thirty-two to thirty-five thousand throughout the year and trying to run a cow cap operation. Sweet kinda come at a premium this year, so. But I do what I signed up for and I'm excited about the opportunity. And I thank you guys for letting me come down and share this a little bit with you tonight. So if you had any questions, I'll try to answer them, other than that.
Senator Greger, I think, um, your protege, so to speak, yes? I mean, is that fair to say that he encouraged you? What's the best advice he's given you, uh, to be successful as a rural senator in the U.K.?
Two things he's always said, um, don't get it. And I just talked to another senator about that right before I come down here tonight. Uh, two things Tim told me, and, um, one of them I've already been living that by. But the other one, I said, when you start getting in the legislative bills and stuff, um, don't be trading votes unless you know the total bill. I mean, you can, you can, um, he never got into counting votes. A lot of the senators wanna count votes so they know if their bill, when it hits the floor, if it's gonna pass or not. Says don't commit yourself until you hear the whole story on that bill because there's a lot of changes. If you commit early, there's a lot of amendments and a lot of changes and a lot of watering down or whatever that could take place before it ever gets to the floor. And if you're committed, that leads to the second part of this. Be honest with people. Um, you may not agree with them and they might not like your answer, but if you're honest with them, they will respect you more than if you tell them one thing, say as far as like a vote or something. If you tell them one thing and they get surprised by the way your vote was cast, uh, once you lose people's, and you guys know all that. Once you lose people respecting their trust, you won't get it back and, uh, you won't get anything accomplished later there. So those are the two biggest takeaways. Um, Tim's, uh, staff, I was able to, uh, retain one of them. Um, the second one, I tried to talk her into it. She's originally from Plainview, Kim Davis, I don't know if you know Kim.
She graduated with her.
Yeah. And she, I tried to talk her into staying, and she goes, I'm not gonna break in another senator. Um, I've been in the Capitol for forty-two years, so, uh, I did retain one of Tim's staff members and elevated him to my legal assistant. And, um, he's a very bright young man. He graduated top of his class at University of Nebraska in Political Science. And he's, um, he's a workhorse already, you know, but he's only twenty-three, twenty-four years old. And the second kid I hired, um, is about the same age, and he's gonna be my administrative assistant. And he's a technology guru, so that's what I wanted, somebody that... I told him, when I go to the floor for the first few times down there at least, until I get acclimated with it, I want a hard copy of papers because I don't wanna hit a button and lose all my information and I'll be able to train with. So, um, those two kids are gonna be working hard. Uh, the youngest one, the last one I hired, Drake Jones is his name. And he was an intern for Governor Ricketts. And, uh, he worked as an intern for Don Bacon, Congressman Bacon, and Congressman Fortinberry. So he's got some political knowledge behind him, and I think they will be very good. And, um, lean on them a lot for, uh, when there's over a thousand bills coming at you. I'm not gonna be able to memorize every one of them. And that'll be their job to help draft the bills and help research the bills, the pros and cons of them, and help set up the meetings so I can talk to people about the pros and cons of those bills. So it's, it's a process. It, uh, it all starts with, um, January third, we'll have a, a third district caucus meetings, and that's where we start to, um, see who's gonna be, who we want to run for committee chairs within our, uh, third district. And so everybody's jockeying for position now to become a committee chair or on the executive committee or what they call the committee committee that... And the committee committee, what they do is they, they're the ones that dictate. I can put down my preference for what committees I want to be on, but they're the ones that are gonna say, okay, you're gonna be on banking and you're gonna be on judicial or you're gonna be on natural resources. It all comes back to those people. So it's a little political juggling going on down there. That'd be a big day. And then, um, on the fourth, we get sworn in. And then after that, that's when we get issued our computers, our offices, um, our aides that'll be working with us will be, um, they will be brought in. So right now, they're, um, Turner is, we're still Senator Greger's aide, and he's still on his payroll, but he will transition over to my payroll, uh, January fourth. So there's one, and then moving into an apartment, can't, I can't get moved in until the third of, uh, January down there. So there's a lot of things happening on the third and fourth. But, um, and when it comes to those kids, uh, their payrolls dictate what they stay. You hire them, and then, uh, kind of bill, accounting office at the Capitol looks at their resumes, their years of experience, and then they dictate, and they ask, you gotta arrange that you can put in what you want to start them out at, and then they will dictate how much they're paid, so. And, um, they don't get paid a lot, but they're gonna be making a lot more money than I am down there. And so, anyway, that's, that's just the gist of it right now. But if there's any other questions, I'd answer them. If not, all of you guys get on with your meeting.
How many different committees are there to get on?
Uh, fourteen.
Oh, no.
Judicial is a tough one. I mean, it deals with everything, um, you know, with the law. Um, your head will, they said your head will be spinning if you're on judicial. So hopefully the first year I'm not on judicial appropriation. Appropriations Committee is the one that allocates all the funds going out throughout the state. So those two committees, they, uh, uh, they work late in the night. I mean, they, they'll start at seven-thirty in the morning, and a lot of nights are going until nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night. So, um, but there are, there are some good committees that I, I would like to be a part of. And like I say, I will accept any committee that I'm asked to be on because that means I've gotten there. Uh, right now, I think my office will be on the eleventh floor, which, um, like Tim said, isn't a bad thing. You get a good view of Lincoln. Plus, if people really wanna, really wanna see you, if they're gonna come up to the eleventh floor to see you, so.
Really upset.
But anyway, so I'm looking forward to it. It's gonna be exciting. My family is behind me a hundred percent, so I wouldn't run if I wouldn't have that, uh, commitment and that support from my family, so. Other than that? Anything? Okay, you guys have a good rest of your meeting, thank you for loving me here.
Thanks for coming down. Congratulations. Safe trip home.
Unless you wanna stay for this. You're in for enough at the Capitol.
We're talking about policy.
I gotta get home and get rested up, I'm supposed to wrap basketball tomorrow night.
There you go, Steve, keep you connected to what you...
All right, we'll move on to number eleven, board policy, review board policy, six twelve oh eight, oh nine, oh ten. Ten, eleven, and twelve. Shortest policies we've got so far.
I'll do the same thing.
Most of these are all state, state-owned anyways. You have any changes or recommendations on this?
Um, policies, let's see, where are we at? Six twelve?
Twelve oh eight, it's six twelve twelve.
Okay. Uh, least restrictive environment, this is a, a good one really for, for folks in general to be aware of. A quite commonly used term when talking about special education, uh, support and placement. Uh, the least restrictive environment is the general education classroom. And when you start making decisions about the best placement for a student with special needs, as soon as you start taking them out of the general education classroom, uh, you are placing restrictions on their environment. And there are several different levels or several different layers of restrictions or, uh, as you'd say, you know, moving them out of the general education classroom to different... So it could be a, it could be a pull-up for a short amount of time, or it could be, uh, you know, either more extended, or it might be, you know, a placement off campus, which would be even more restrictive, uh, placement at district. Uh, so that's a conversation that takes place in every IEP. Uh, would be, what's the least restrictive environment for that student? It's what keeps that IEP team always at the front of their mind that the best thing for a child, or, and not necessarily the best thing for a child, but we always want to try to maintain as much of their education with their general education peers, regardless of, um, their, their special ed verification, you know? But sometimes, and you guys know, we have several students who have a quite severely restricted environment because they don't attend school on our campus at all. And so those are difficult decisions to make, um, you know, for, for those students. But, um, this language is, is, uh, is all accurate, uh, all of it, yes. I mean, I don't have recommendations, uh, you know, for, for any of it, uh, for any changes because these are all very strictly grounded in statute. So any change in statute that might change the language of any of these policies would be pushed out to us by N E S B.
So if a kid's going to school, say at Zion, and they have special needs, and they have...
We serve them.
Then they come.
Yep.
Are they enrolled here now, or are they still enrolled?
No, they're enrolled there, um, uh, but we would, and then a decision is made about where they would be served, whether we would send service to their school or whether we provide that service in our district. And so now you have transportation discussions.
So you did have conjunction with the teachers there to come up with that plan?
So you've noticed on all these policies too, the second paragraph is the same, uh, on all of these souls.
Okay, anybody have any questions on those? So that, we'll move on to board development. Page is one thirty-nine, one thirty-five. Page is one thirty-nine, one thirty-five.
Have to do with meeting procedures.
Yeah, there's a lot in here too. I know we don't always do everything the way it's stated here. I guess we don't really typically have any problems getting to a vote and taking the vote and satisfied with how the vote was, outcome of the vote.
Does, you know, talk about trying to be very intentional and purposeful about the creation of the agenda. And then once that agenda is public and official, that the board in open session has to be, you know, very, very careful to stick to the items of the agenda with regard to any conversation in public. And that can be sometimes a slippery slope, especially for a small board, maybe in a small school district. And, you know, your conversation can sometimes, you know, tail away a little bit. And that just, that happens probably in most every school district to a certain extent. Certainly, you know, something to always think about, be aware of.
I guess I'm just thankful, my fellow board members, because like I said, I know I don't always go by these official rules all the time when we change, make changes or go from a motion to rescind again. Probably don't always do it by the book, but I appreciate you guys' cooperation. I've been on here for a long time and this is still, a lot of it is, I'm sure I've read it before, but it's just, it's a lot to re-visit.
Will you rescind it or withdraw it? It's a drawn motion.
Throw it, you could put it straight through.
And it, and so the second's not required, but I didn't just withdraw it. But if you rescind it, so it takes two thirds vote.
One forty-five.
One forty-five, top of it. I just kind of thought it was the same thing. I think that's after the motion. So you take that. So if you've already voted on it and you want to rescind it, it takes a two thirds vote for that. So that's why. That's why I'm taking that, where you make a motion to rescind it, it's had to be voted on, you can withdraw.
That's right. This one's already voted on. Which would be different than changing it. This one, you just strike it completely off the books and not, not change it. Number thirteen, superintendent evaluation. So I met with Derek, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, maybe. Well, I can tell you about the summary of it. I took it in after I went, went over it a little bit and answered a few questions, how it went. And I think we're both satisfied with the outcome or.
Yep.
Small discussion.
Grabbing you open. And we're, we're really aligned, I think, pretty well when, you know, because I use the same document for me, for myself, just for my own reflection. Very well aware of my strengths and shortcomings as a leader in areas to grow. And the, the work that you want me to focus on for growth. Certainly, certainly aware of that as well. But I appreciate the commendations and the recommendations.
Kind of on a side note, you know, we had some questions that we kept in A and because it didn't seem to apply or didn't understand them or whatever. I guess if we wanted to, we could put it, put it to a committee to maybe pull some of those questions out of there and revamp it a little bit. We thought we wanted to do that or, or we could leave it the way it is and just kind of ignore the ones that don't pertain to us too. You know, and when we do it as a group kind of thing, I think it's probably all right if we just leave it. If we agree that that question doesn't really mean anything for us, let's just ignore it. That's one thing, you know, if we're all sending them in blind, it'd be a little different. But that's something, I guess, if we as a board wanted to change a little bit, but since we can't, we just have to approve again once we pull those out. So something to think about. Okay, move on to action items. Number fourteen, discuss and take possible action on converting Midwest Bank CDs from flex to regular CDs to earn higher interest rates.
Hey, check with Kevin today and that rate has moved from three and a quarter to three and a half. So, and that's a ten, fifteen, or twenty month rate. So, I mean, I certainly recommend that we, that we go ahead and move to that rate. It would become a, it wouldn't be a flex CD then, so it wouldn't have access to those funds, tele光. So, you know, again, I think probably your only, your biggest decision is whether you want a ten, fifteen, or twenty. So you just roll the dice a little bit, I guess, on whether you, how you anticipate the market to go. Because you're, you're locked in for any rate changes obviously, regardless of, or depending upon what, what term you choose. Let's see, let's see if I've got that. So three point five percent, four hundred thousand dollars. We're currently at a quarter.
And what's the time for it?
Ten, twenty, ten, fifteen, or twenty months.
Same rate.
Same rate.
Is it two CDs or just one?
We currently have two.
That's, they both.
They're both, we have two CDs, one at two fifty and one at one fifty. They're both at a quarter. So I, I don't, I don't know, I guess it makes sense maybe to just make one four hundred thousand dollar CD at three and a half percent, fifteen months, right, right in the middle.
Is there a penalty to pull out?
Well, there would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And could you pull out a part, portion without taking it all out? We got to that point where we're at four hundred thousand.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if you can take just some. I know you can at another bank, that, where we have CDs.
You'd probably be better off probably taking a loan against, honestly, instead of taking the penalty.
The rate would be, the rate on a loan will be lower than the penalty for the loss of three and a half percent interest.
Right. So that's probably what Kevin would suggest if you ran into a line, probably take a loan out against this.
I would give you about the eight hundred thousand a year ago at this meeting.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, fifteen months, the law must do what, hopefully we kind of have the next fifteen months figured out that there aren't going to be in that vote. But you never know what's up.
So we have any other CDs that are like going to be coming up here in the next few months to be, that we can roll or whatever?
We do. We, and I was going to mention that in the superintendent report. I did access some of our CD funds in Brunswick and Madison to make payroll this month. So, and, and so two hundred thousand of Brunswick and two hundred thousand of Madison, which leaves a hundred thousand in each. That hundred thousand left in Brunswick will, will get three and a quarter. And a hundred thousand left in Madison is at one point four.
So are they starting over now then with a new timeframe?
So the main thing that makes the Midwest CDs different is they were flex CDs. So you get a higher rate, you get a higher rate for a, for a non-flex CD is.
It's locked in.
You're locked in.
Okay, I'll make a motion to convert our Midwest Bank CDs from flex to regular.
Second.
First and seconded, myself, yes, Tim. Yeah, Tim.
Yes, Wyatt.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Fifteen, discuss and take possible action on the two thousand twenty-two annual report.
I think this is the fourth year of this format, which is a little, maybe a little sensory overload, I don't know. But I think it serves better than what I inherited, but I'll do, I'll provide however you want it. So until you come a different, I just continue to update these pieces of data.
Do these go home with parents or any figures?
They have to.
I mean, you have a published on a website.
Yeah. So social media and the website. They, and they could easily, a copy could easily, easily be provided at, you know, our activities or contests, you know, or a program, or a reporter. That'd be an easy way to disseminate as well.
So I like how it gives several years, you can kind of see the pattern shift.
I would provide a copy of this to any candidate for, for employment here, teaching physician. And if they're, they've likely done some research anyway, but, and, and most of it they wouldn't be too interested in with the exception of the enrollment figures. So when they're looking at stability of the district, that's a real concern or question maybe for somebody who may be, may be joining a new district. So certainly our enrollment numbers are something for us to have some relief about for sustainability, for, you know, years down the road, sustainability of programs. That, that's usually one of the primary concerns when you start running out of kids is how you continue to provide programs, athletics, activities, you know, among other things. So enrollment is, is really strong, which is a real positive for our district.
Were you able to project that out a couple of years or how many, you know, do you have that data?
Yeah.
How big is it going to be?
We, you know, we try to look at daycare numbers and preschool numbers, you know, in the region. And, and until we get to our registration for our preschool, I mean, we, we don't know for sure if that's our first best estimate of what we can expect. So yeah, if there's a shortage of two-year-olds out there, I would, you know, we're, we're not aware of it. Yeah, I mean, we, we have, you know, a census, which is, you know, somewhat complicated, you know, to find out how many two-year-olds are in our, anticipating whether in two years they'll be in our preschool. But we know for the next thirteen years, there'll be obviously some fluidity with that.
I was kind of surprised about the masters areas with our teachers, how far we are behind the state average.
Yeah, we lost a few in the past.
Retired.
Couple of years. Hired, you know, a lot of, a lot of new teachers in the past couple of years, so.
How many do we have working on, towards our masters right now? We have several.
I think I moved five teachers across on the pay scale last year.
But they'd already be in this thirty-three percent.
No, they're on their way to it.
Okay.
Oftentimes it's when a teacher gets to a masters, that's, they're done.
With the school.
Yeah, that's, they're on personal, so they can continue to move across, you know, a few more columns. But the masters degree in itself is oftentimes an educational goal of, of a teacher.
Another thing on dual credit information down at the bottom right, I was surprised at how many students, you know, all I ever hear is we don't have a program for dual credits, you know, but if we've got twenty-eight kids taking dual credit courses, this, this is probably only going to take, it's only going to be in your high school. Probably not yet, probably not a freshman taking dual credit courses.
No.
So, you know.
And, and that was something that I think we did offer years before. Students could have one class where they would take an online course through Northeast generally, I believe. And that's not something that we, we currently offer. We prefer for our kids to take dual credit in a classroom with a teacher face to face.
So most of those are right here in front of our own teacher?
Yeah. Or all of it. Would that, all of those be kind, we don't have any kids that received dual credit from a distance learning or from a teacher.
We have a few that take it independently, that go through Northeast. One of them's sitting right over there.
There we go. I bet they love to answer some questions about their dual credit experience. Or maybe not.
Anybody else have any questions on this?
I just, one thing that I see that kind of sticks out to me is like the ACT score data, which is probably not that big a deal, but like in twenty eighteen, we were up at twenty-four and then now we've dropped to twenty-one point, it's like kind of trending down.
It was on one direction to go from the twenty-four.
That's the year where number one was stayed. That's twice one point three.
Isn't the Berker score thirty-two?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Any other questions? All right, so that will move on to discuss and take possible action on the purchase of clown cash for staff.
The annual decision by the board is show of generosity during the Christmas season. Been twenty dollars for the past couple of years.
Doctor, you need to make a motion on the last item.
I want to, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept the plan in public schools, annual report for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
I'll second that.
It's been first and seconded, yeah, myself, yes, Wyatt.
Yes.
Tim. Yes, Champ. Yes. Motion carries five zero. Okay, now we'll move on to number sixteen, discuss and take possible action on purchase of clown cash for staff. I guess I recommend we just stick with what, what we've been doing, was twenty dollars. Okay.
Wasn't it Tim just helping with that?
Yeah. Yeah, we did one. Paper is. We were waiting for that day.
I'll make a motion to purchase clown cash for each staff member in the amount of twenty dollars each. I'll second.
It's been first and seconded, Wyatt.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Champ.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries five zero. Seventeen, discuss and take possible action on terms of contract for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four for the super superintendent.
They provide the same information for you that you, that I give you every year, copy of the current contract. And the only term or the only language in the current contract that I'd ask you to consider would be salary. And provided an array for you of some regional superintendents. And so, you know, three percent is somewhat standard. So that's what I would ask for. Our teacher average increase next year will be somewhere in between three and four percent, depending upon how many teachers move across on the pay scale. So.
It was set.
And it's, it's already set, the, the teacher salary matrices for next year. So I ask for three percent. I, I may have confused you a little bit with the, the health benefit history on what I'm going to ask the board to consider probably into the future. So cash and lieu is, is common among districts for certified staff members that don't accept the health benefit. Every school district provides salary and health benefit, among other benefits, paid leave and such. So they're all provided a health benefit. If they do not need the health benefit because they get health insurance, either because they're under age twenty-six, because usually they have their parents' insurance until the age twenty-six, or if they have health insurance through their spouse. So. So if they don't need the health insurance through the district, districts always provide some level of cash in lieu, which is generally negotiated, uh, for teachers, through the negotiated agreement. So, uh, the teachers agreement with the board is fifty-five percent of a single health and family. Mine is seventy-five percent of a family health and single family. So, and that's, that's less than my predecessor, and the, the, the raw number is greater because my predecessor was seven years ago. But when I came in, he was at eighty percent. I started at fifty, and over the past six years have negotiated that to seventy-five. That is not considered salary with regard to enders, with regard to pension. So, um, I would like to ask the board to consider reducing my cash in lieu, and simply shifting that salary. That won't be at any expense to the district, it's just shifting the, the language on the contract, uh, which will, which will help my pension, but it won't cost the district. You know, it, it'd be a minimal expense because the district does kick in one percent more than what I kick in. So enders is, uh, nine point seven eight percent of my paycheck goes to pension. The district kicks in nine point eight seven seven eight percent, and the state kicks in two percent. So, um, public employees in Nebraska are taken very well cared of in our, in our pension system. Teachers fall under that, certified staff fall under that. So as I continue to near closer to retirement, uh, I'm going to want to, uh, have as much salary as possible. So I will gladly, uh, exchange that for a lower cash in lieu.
And you're also saying state law dictates you can only raise your salary by eight percent.
Eight percent a year, you're, you're capped at eight percent increase per year.
So we can't do this in one year.
This would, take a, a, over the course of a few years of negotiations, hopefully we continue to, continue to serve you well enough where you have me back until the point I, uh, am eligible for retirement. Um, and by that time, I, I will be quite interested in negotiating a lower cash in lieu and a higher salary. Doesn't have to be done this year, but I certainly want you to be, uh, aware, that that'll be, uh, something important to me as I approach retirement.
So you couldn't go to that this first year because it's a thirteen percent?
We could, we could take a step in that direction.
So you only eighty percent of that was, yeah, in one year?
So if, if, uh, if we were to look at a, uh, six or seven percent raise in salary and just offset that by reducing my cash in lieu to maybe sixty percent of family, you know, I could do that math. So, and that's, it doesn't have to be done tonight, but if you want to direct me to, okay, figure out a couple of these options. Uh, and then I, I can show you how, you know, the total expense of the district would be the same. So if we're looking at three percent, but I stay at seventy-five, cash in lieu, that's a one sixty-eight eight six five. So if the board was, okay, a total of three percent on salary, if that would be agreeable, agreeable, and leave cash in lieu the same, one sixty-eight eight six five, okay? We can still achieve that one sixty-eight eight six five by reducing my cash in lieu and adding it to salary. Now, it'll look like, oh, we got a, we got an eight percent increase in salary. Well, we have to make sure we tell the whole picture, or tell the whole story. So we had a reduction in cash in lieu. It, the only thing would be when, you know, down the road, when you hire a different superintendent, when you try and put together a package, a compensation package. That individual may or may not need cash in lieu. Because the circumstance in our district, of course, is if you have a spouse that works somewhere else and has full family, or if you have two, if you have a employee and spouse that work in the district, which we have several. So they, they're in that position to receive cash in lieu because the spouse receives the insurance.
I don't, I don't have a problem with making this change, but when you look down, say this year it doesn't make any difference, but next year it does. Because when we look at your contract next year and you want three percent raise, it's on a higher salary number than what it will be if we leave it the way it is now. So you're gonna get a bigger raise next year than the three percent than you would if we leave it the way it is now.
On that array you got, what is the additional compensation on?
So some of those additional, I, I don't, I don't know what those are, they just come out of the, uh, they come from the NCSA, uh, report. So notice that my additional compensation is much higher than everybody else's, but their benefits are much higher. So I bet some of those benefits are actually additional compensation. You know, I, I, I don't know. So, uh, but those, those benefits might be already paying out unused, uh, paid leave, what that would be. Enders would be in there, pension would be in there.
There wouldn't be anything in there like if there were AD or something like that?
Could be.
That would be a figure.
Yep, it could be. So ninety percent of superintendent contracts are the same, they look just like mine. If I go and look on the superintendent transparency pay act and, and they're posted on school districts' websites, I can tell that their contracts were created maybe by the same legal firm. But they can negotiate some, some creative things for either additional compensation or additional benefits. So I, you know, Osmond, for example, I mean, I just, I don't know for sure what that is. Because that's obviously an outlier. Well, I'd know it's, we got the two thousand points, I guess I should say. You know, a, a battle creek at forty-seven, that's all listed in benefits with no additional compensation, so.
What's the difference between a specialist and a master pl, and a masters plus and a doctorate?
Yeah. Um, a masters plus means somebody's working towards their superintendent certificate. A specialist means you have, you have received the degree to get a superintendent certificate. So you can stop at a specialist, you have to have a specialist to have a superintendent certificate. So if they say masters plus, all of those folks are working towards that specialist. And a specialist is halfway to a doctorate, so, um, some folks, if, if you're halfway there, well, let's just finish that doctorate. And that would, it would be a, obviously a much smaller, smaller percentage of folks.
So what's the X at the very last column?
That means they have principal duties as well, they're superintendent slash principal.
So you would think that their salaries would be higher.
Potentially, but it's gonna be a smaller district generally. And oftentimes, uh, you know, enrollment matters. Uh, it's just one of the contributing factors to determine, you know, the level of, level of work. More kids, more families, more activities.
There's not too many of them really.
You could maybe look at, you know, how the total compensation is coming out each year and what that amounts to, percentage wise. You know, if, you know, like you were saying, if the salary is gonna be a lot higher, instead of amount to more three percent, then you look at the number on the right side, work more off that, I guess maybe.
Well, and we don't have to make any changes for a few years yet. Because this plan will retire really early. Or we're not gonna give the contract, you know, yet. Like I said, I don't have any problem working towards that, I just, I just take, you know, next year, then you're going off that higher figure. And I suppose a guy could put something in the contract too, the figure that you're gonna go off of, you know, the figure that he's at now, or when we change it, whatever rate increase you give him, it's, goes back to that base, not the base he's at now, you know, that's what I'm saying. You'd have two separate numbers, you'd be working off them. And I don't know what it would add up to. Sorry. Next year, your salary next year, if, if we did the whole thing in one year.
Yeah.
What would your salary go up and what would three percent be on that?
So if you were to go, and give me the, the same cash in lieu as teachers, so if superintendent were the same. Three percent on, on that spiked salary amount would be forty-nine hundred. So three percent on one sixty-three, three seven five.
Yeah, but what would it be on? Let's see, you're getting twenty thousand? That's what you're, that's what you're looking at in raising your salary? No, we'll leave it to full twenty.
Thirteen percent.
I, I use the, the second one, the option being.
Oh, oh, there you go.
Or.
Fifty-four ninety. So if you just took three percent of that, that would be your extra salary increase. Oh, okay, yeah. So that would look at it.
Um, or if you'd like the budget committee to meet with me and we can sit around a table and work out a few different scenarios and present that to the board next week, or next month, I should say.
Yeah, anybody who could back up, I'm a budget committee, so. I'll be all right with that. Yep. Those numbers after.
Thank you.
Okay. So do, we need to offer the contract extension tonight?
We do it all last month, I'm comfortable. Well, now that I think about it, yeah, I, the terms can be next month, but.
Right.
But I would like, I guess, a motion for a contract for twenty-three, twenty-four, which would be under the current terms. Actually, I have a contract through twenty-four, it would be adding your twenty-four, twenty-five.
So is the motion the same with the terms?
No.
No.
It's different.
Just a contract through the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
With the terms to be determined.
Yep.
I'll make the motion that we offer a contract to Dr. Arlt for the year twenty-four, twenty-three to twenty-five?
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
The terms to be.
The terms to be discussed. As R.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The first and second offered Dr. Arlt an extension on his contract, that means words aren't gonna be the same, for the twenty-four, twenty-five year school year with the terms to be determined later. Okay?
Yes. That's the end.
Okay, myself, yes, Deb.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Champs.
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Okay, reports, activity director, wake up a little.
All winter sports are underway and competing right now. Um, we get the chants Friday, we have dance break, walking tacos and all that good stuff coming in. So that part will all be here. Uh, wanna give a shout out to the One Act cast and crew on a great year, they finished up here just about a week ago, a little over a week ago, um, so they did a really nice job. Moratorium is coming up here December twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, so we won't have anything going on. Um, and then holiday tournament is different this year, uh, we are going to Wayne instead of Naya Pereira, so, few things just for that, better venue, um, better facilities for our kids, but it's also a little bit better competition too, that our kids are gonna be competing against, so. Should be a great atmosphere, been there, seen that one played, so it's a, our kids should really enjoy it.
At Wayne State, not Wayne High.
They play that at Wayne State College, yep. So, kids could have played in a college facility.
That's a three-day, three, guaranteed three games?
Guaranteed three games, yep. And it's teams that we don't, there's only one team in there that's on our schedule, so.
So I just have a comment, I don't know about you guys, but I, I really don't look at this schedule much.
You want me to save some papers?
Goes to all the work to be like that. I don't because we have, you know, other ways of finding out, but we have a cable call too, so.
Yeah, I do.
So I just thought if nobody looked at them, why, there's no sense having to go through them.
I just recently asked if they still do the paper, those little cards that, they don't.
All right, we'll leave that way.
So leave it in.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, principals report.
We have lots of testing and music concerts happening this weekend next, that's kind of the synopsis of our report. Our little, um, pirate showdown is a huge success. I think as of the first week plus today, we have raised eight hundred thirty-eight dollars. So we're super excited about that.
When is that?
It is December twenty-second will be the day, that afternoon, mid-afternoon I should say, where we will pay our staff members, so.
Can you do that with the zoom camera, for the zoom camera?
Turn the hot cam on.
We can't turn it on, we talked about doing it in the pirate gym, so we'll let you all know when that is, the time too.
To you live from the pirate gym.
Maybe you could channel thirty-five here. Yeah, we'll have to put it on there.
Who's, who's in the top?
Um, well, I am now, I was gone Friday, and my tally's doubled.
I don't know why that happened.
But, uh, myself, Mrs. Ham, Ms. Richter, Mrs. Hoffman, Trinity, those are about the top five in our building. Um, over here, Mr. Schmidt, Dr. Arlt, Mr. Schumacher, Mr. Leckie.
So it'll be two types?
Lot?
Leek.
No, leek, sorry. Leek.
He's winning.
Yeah. And it seems like there was one more.
Nobody likes him, you know?
He's a little much, not much way ahead.
Oh, you're so popular, no.
Eh, you know, it's all about whoever starts the nomination and then everybody just kind of follows suit. Everybody gets excited about somebody, so then somebody gets a ton of votes.
Or, I heard some kids the other day say, oh, for my mom. You talk to your mom?
Yep.
And give me the pie.
I, um, had a couple of parents ask me, and I don't know where, maybe the information's published, maybe not, but is there anywhere that it says, like, what the wind, the wind chill factor is to where you guys don't go off for recess? Or is it just a number that you guys just kind of make up every other day, or?
Nope, it, it is ten degrees.
So wind chill of ten degrees.
Feel like, feel like, nope, feel like temperature is ten degrees. It has to be at least that, and then we go outside.
Okay, good luck.
Is it on the website?
It is on our, it is on the elementary monthly newsletter too.
What weather channel do you guys look at to, to determine that, I guess?
I think if somebody goes like this and they pull up weather.
Uh-huh.
Weather bug or weather underground or?
Yeah, whatever.
The reason I ask is because I know a couple of weeks ago, it was like, the weather was way crappier earlier in the week, and I made the kids take their snow crap, and then they said they didn't, they didn't go out, or, no, it was better out, better and early in the week, I made them take it, they went in the gym, and then later in the week, it was way worse. And I told them, I said, just leave your snow crap here because you guys aren't gonna be going to the gym, and then they went in the gym, or, you won't be going outside, and they went to the gym. So I just kind of wonder if it's just like, the teacher that's on duty that day decides like, hmm, I don't feel like going outside today, or I do. Because before, when I asked that question a year ago, I was told you guys have a number, but nobody told me the actual number.
It won zero degrees last year.
Okay, well, we have a number and everybody can, you know.
Well, one thing is, you know, the temperature's one thing, but depends on whether the ground's warm or snow or your slope.
Mine, I'm outside every day of my life, I think I know what the weather's like, and it's funny.
I'm just saying that it feels different.
When I see it, and it's like, they're not outside today, but then tomorrow they're outside, and it's just, and it's like the same temperature, it doesn't make sense to me. And I have other parents that have asked me the same thing, and like I said, a year. And like I said, a year ago when I asked that question, I was told, we have a number, that's exactly what they told me, we have a number. But they wouldn't tell us what the frigging number was.
Really? Are you out that information? You asked and we said, no, we're not gonna tell you.
Mrs. Hudson actually said, we have a number, that's what she said, and I asked a couple of other parents that I go visiting with.
And you asked her what it was and she wouldn't tell you?
No, I said, what's the number, and she said, we have a number, that's all she said.
Well, it was zero, I knew it was last year.
Okay, that's fine, I just, I asked a couple of other parents that have kids in the same class, and they said that they got the same answers, and that's why I wondered.
Alright, question answered, move on. President's report, um, just wanna congratulate the three election winners, Melissa, congratulations on coming on board next month. And you guys for, thank you for coming back and putting your name back in. I wanna thank Jim, I don't know if he's watching at home or not, to thank Jim for his last four years of service. I saw Jim this morning, he's not in very good shape right now, but he's in his second physical therapy. And his leg looks, looks pretty good right now. So yeah, I'm glad he was on and brought his expertise to the last four years. And we'll move on with Melissa next four years, and he's right on hold, so. Thanks to you guys, um, next month we will have, you know, nomination of all our positions again. There will be a vote for president, vice president, secretary, uh, to be in the meeting. And then, you know, at that point, whoever is president or whatever, we can talk about the time of meetings and and the fundamentals of this, of board service, if we wanna continue doing that, looking at that, or if we think it's a waste of ten minutes for a meeting, which I don't think, but we'll, we'll talk about some of those things next month, we have our board here, so.
Where, where are we at on the digital copies?
Uh, well, I put it on the agenda to talk about it, so we can, we can put that on next month to talk about it, but if that is a discussion, I, the president should vote on it, so. Other than that, that's all I have, we'll move on to superintendent's report.
Okay, you have a, a copy of the twenty-one thousand dollar audit, um, annual requirement, um. So, you know, there's a whole lot of data in there, there's an AFR that goes with it as well, AFR is just the data, just the raw numbers that go with it, so. Couple of things that I would direct your attention to, uh, a lot of language, uh, in some of their narratives about internal controls and segregation of duties in a small district. Uh, same conversations, it seems, that Kelly and I have with them every year, as well as Tammy. You know, about, uh, just making sure that we have two people that are always involved, somebody checking on, uh, bills, receipts, claims, uh, gate receipts, counting of gate receipts, all that, uh, kind of business, we have those conversations really every year. Some of those things we do pretty well, um, and we're, uh, we satisfy the, the auditor, but, uh, every year they'll also say, well, okay, we think, uh, for better segregation of duties, you know, you should have somebody do this and have another person do that. Sure, we get that, we understand that, uh, a couple of things that we didn't used to do, um, you know, we do now. So, uh, but it, you know, a couple of, of, maybe some more, you know, significant things that you're gonna find when you go through here are, uh, the, the state does not, is not, you know, too concerned about your revenues, but they're certainly are about your disbursements. Okay, and so if you budget X for disbursements, uh, you need to stay within those disbursements. Well, there are three accounts that we didn't, that we dispersed more than we had budgeted, uh, and that was, uh, the activity account, uh, the school nutrition account, and building, uh, building fund.
Is there a range?
Special building fund.
Is there a range?
No, if you go over a, a dollar, you are, you're over disbursements and you should amend your budget. Uh, and so, yeah.
Before that.
Yeah, you should have amended your budget before, so, you know, I, I, I went through those accounts pretty carefully, and I recognize things that, as I prepare the budget and make recommendations to the board, things that I've learned that I know I need to do better, you know, they say when you budget, always underestimate your revenues and overestimate your expenditures. Well, when you do that on this budget document, if I overestimate expenditures, it's gonna require me to call for a higher levy. It's gonna call, it's gonna require me to call for a levy to meet those disbursements. And so you, you need to be, you need to sharpen your pencil, as they say, and try to be as careful as you can. Well, a couple of decisions that we made after we passed our budget last year in twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, was this HVAC project. So we borrowed eight hundred thousand dollars in the middle of a fiscal budget, and then we spent that eight hundred thousand. That eight hundred thousand blew up our special building fund budget. So we went well over our building fund budget because we borrowed funds, we didn't, we didn't go and, and raise a levy in the middle of a fiscal budget, I mean, you can't do that. Um, but we spent more than we budgeted, uh, primarily because we borrowed that eight hundred thousand and we sent it to solely advocates for a one point six million dollar HVAC project. Okay, so, uh, you know, over the course of the next few years, we will, we will pay that off, and I'll be, you know, a, a little more precise about budgeting for some of the, you know, for, for continuing to pay off that, that eight hundred thousand dollars.
If we would have used our CDs instead of borrowing that, would we have been okay with that?
But I would have had to budget for those expenditure, those CDs, so I would have had to show that, yeah. We, I budgeted nine hundred thousand for special building fund, well, the HVAC project was one point six million, you know, so it was, you know, pushing twice as much as what I actually budgeted. The, uh, activity fund, uh, went well over, well, that score vision, we paid for that score vision, we, we, we funded that through the school rather than our booster club, which is not a five oh one C three, we're taxing them, we funded that through the school. So the revenue came in, we then spent that revenue, but that revenue shows as an expenditure out of the activity fund. You know, so, uh, so we went over budget on the activity fund due to that, uh, that Branson trip, kids raised money, it went into the activity fund, they then spent that out. And that Branson trip was supposed to be a Chicago trip a year earlier, so at, at A-Rig, it wasn't, uh, you know, funds that we spent that we didn't plan for. And, but, so those funds came in, uh, through their fundraising and such, they had a, the music department had a huge pop fundraiser, so they bought like six thousand dollars in pop, and then they went out and sold it as a fundraiser. Okay, but to purchase that initial cash of pop, uh, was something that, that wasn't in the budget. The half racks for the weight room, we purchased half racks for the weight room, well, the booster club paid for one of those half racks. Uh, so we did get those funds in, but they don't care about the revenue, they care about the expenditures, and that's the way it is, and that's fine, but the, the Clausen Memorial, the family that was killed in the fire, we had a huge fundraiser, uh, in our gym that, uh, the next couple of weeks later, if you remember. Okay, we then wrote a check, so we put those funds in our activity account into Clausen, uh, family memorial, we then wrote a check to them. That check counts as an expenditure out of that account. Okay, so, and that wouldn't have been something that we would have anticipated or budgeted for back in September, in prior September. So there, I mean, there's some explanation as to how we blew up that budget, how we went over budget, well, we need to look at all those things, it puts it into context a little more, and does provide a little bit of sense of, of understanding of how you could go, oh, double over your budget, as we did in the special building fund. The, um, elementary had a couple of significant fundraisers, leukemia and lymphoma was a big check that we wrote. Now, that was a, again, that was a fundraiser, that wasn't, those weren't funds that we levied and then spent, or didn't plan to levy but still spent them. Plankton Brunswick Community Fund, it was that a pie donation or something, so the, the pies one year went to that. FFA fruit sales is significant, we bought a wrestling pad, you know, so, um, again, that could've, and in hindsight, maybe so, we should have waited until next fiscal year. But we had a, an option to buy a state wrestling, an actual state wrestling at a significant discount. And so Coach Boyer and I brought that to the board to consider, uh, and so we did that. School nutrition, I underestimated wages, uh, and I underestimated inflation for the cost of food. So, um, our, our cost of food, if I can find it, but, the cost of food, I, I budgeted a hundred thousand and actually was one sixteen, four ninety. Our, our salary expenses for, for the kitchen, I budgeted seventy-eight and they were actually eighty-six, eight, seven, four, I need to do a better job of that. The, the, the inflation figure would have been difficult to, to get, to anticipate, I'm, I'm kinda o- okay that I was, I missed that by sixteen, four ninety on a hundred thousand dollar budget. I could've done a better job on the salad, we had fewer snow days last year than we did the, the previous year, was that, how, how significant was that? I don't know, but at any rate, there is some context and explanation for what you will see in the audit that says, you went over budget in three accounts. And you should have amended your budget. True, we should have, so whether we hear from, uh, the Department of Ed or the auditor of public accounts, uh, that sends a letter that says, oh, hey, Plankton Public Schools, you did not amend your budget, and you went over budget in three different accounts. We went over budget on school nutrition last year as well, I didn't hear from them, uh, so it, you know, it, it didn't, it wasn't on their radar. Uh, it's not gonna be a significant violation when there's any kind of fine or anything like that, it might just be a nasty ring that says, hey, we just want you to be aware that you need to amend your budget if you're gonna go over, and so, that's, uh, that's something that I, I, I've gotta manage and monitor a little bit better because we don't wanna get a letter from the auditor of public accounts that says, don't go over budget.
So basically, if you would budget in, like, too much, you're better off to budget too much?
Well, yes, yeah, Chance, I mean, you're exactly right, I mean, it makes, or, or things should wait. Uh, we maybe shouldn't have moved on a one point six million dollar project, you know, we came, but we were worried about the price of materials going up. Everything was starting to skyrocket, and so I, I invited Byron to come in and present to you. But that, this would have been good information for you to have at that time, okay, this is gonna, we'll, we'll go over budget, if we do this, we'll go over budget because we didn't plan for it in this fiscal year. And, but then we could have amended the budget, and so that's, uh, uh, that's a, that's a fiscal responsibility that, uh, that I've gotta watch a little more carefully, and I, and I've gotta consult with Kelly better.
So we can amend it midway through the year or whatever?
Yeah, and so you just have a, you'd use the same document that we use at our budget hearing, so you have a budget hearing again, you'd, you'd advertise it, you'd have a budget hearing, and you'd amend your budget.
And you don't have to show how you're gonna pay it back, or anything, they don't care about you paying it off, they just want you to show what you're spending.
You just can't disperse more than you budgeted.
Is that something you track on a monthly basis, you know, or do you need to do maybe a better job of that, looking at those categories in a month?
Yeah, yeah, because I don't like to sit here in front of you and tell you that we, we went over budget in three different accounts. Now, there is, there are explanations for that, but there are also, then, well, knowing that information, would you have made a different decision about, should we run score vision through the school? Or should we just say, booster club, go make that happen, you're on your own? And should we have borrowed eight hundred thousand and then spent it back out of building fund? For the HVAC project, if we would have waited, would, would it have cost twenty percent more? If we had waited, who knows, I mean, you, you just had to make that calculated decision at that time, about a year ago, right now is when you were making that decision.
Those big items, you know, living and learning, now we, we should have went and amended our budget for most of those big items. You know, smaller ones, where you go over fifteen, twenty thousand, maybe it's not so important, but the bigger ones, looking back.
The activity fund, though, I don't feel like we should have to amend that when you're doing fundraisers through the activity fund and you're paying it, you know what I mean?
It's really not out of your money.
But that's how we look at it, we just look at one side of it.
I mean, maybe with a, a brain, things for themselves should be able to pass that.
And we, and we need to do a good job of anticipating that, okay, if you, our fundraising, okay, what do we do, what's our trend data show us on fundraising in FFA and FCC LA and junior class? And, and so I, I can budget for that, if I anticipate the amount of fundraising, okay, that also, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna budget that as a disbursement, so we're covered.
But you can't, you're not gonna ever be able to, to budget for a family's house getting burnt, I mean, nobody's ever thinking about that, and I'm guessing that was a significant amount of money.
Yeah.
Like probably ten or twenty thousand, ten, ten thousand.
Bottom line, should have amended the budget, I should've, I should've brought that to you, that, hey, we're gonna be pushing, you know.
They should have a category where you can put those things into that, you know, whatever fund, and you, you can go in and out, you know, and it doesn't have to stay within your budget for that year.
Yeah.
You know, fundraiser type stuff, where you know you're gonna spend it, but the money's coming back in later that year.
Yeah.
With donations. That'd be separate, I mean, they're not gonna ever do that, I guess we had our state senator here, we should have brought it up to him while he was here, you know, think something good, good done.
So, so you'll find that in, in the audit, and, oh, that, I mean, that's really the, the only significant thing, I mean, they mentioned something about, you know, on page fifty-two, it's actually your, your very last page, or is it the second to last page? Your very last page, I will tell you that they, they called that, uh, I mean, I just wanna say. We consider the deficiency in internal control over compliance described in twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero five to be a significant deficiency. Okay, that's stated on page forty-six, so when I go to twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero five, the district does not have a system of internal control that would provide management with reasonable assurance that the district's schedule of expenditures of federal awards and related disclosures are complete and presented in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting. I could read on, but I'm already confused, I have no idea what that means, I have no idea what that means. Now, we've had two federal audits of our SIR funds, cause this is with regard to federal, federal distribution of federal funds. We've been audited two separate times outside of this, by the Department of Ed. And everything's approved, so, I mean, I don't really know what this means, I'm not gonna call them, ask them what it means. But you, you, if you read this very thoroughly, you'll find on page forty-six, where it says something about a significant deficiency, page fifty-two. I don't know what it means. But we have a hundred and four thousand dollars in federal funds yet through SIR, uh, that will be, that is being expended right now by, uh, teacher salary and summer school next year, we'll still have a little bit left that we can actually have summer school again in, in twenty-twenty-four. But those federal funds are, go through the grant management system, which is a very intricate system that all superintendents have to use and master to a certain level to, to apply for these grants and to get them approved, and then to request payments of those funds based on your brand. So, uh, we've done that, we've been audited, that, they called it a desk review, but it sure felt like a lot of it.
You know, it really takes a lot of steam out of your annual budget, because if you've been just amended every month, you'd have something come up. You know, fundraiser come up, and well, we're just gonna amend our budget for a year, and every month you're amending your budget, well, pretty soon you're.
Now, your levy's set, though, okay, so you can amend the budget, but you can't change your levy in the middle of the fiscal.
Okay, so you gotta figure out how you're gonna pay it in a different way.
Yeah, so you may just be like, well, okay, we're gonna, cause if you have money in savings, you have a million in savings, if you, if you go and spend that, but you didn't budget for it, this is what will happen. You know, again, I, I don't know how serious of an offense it, it is, we'll find out, uh, how serious it is, it didn't seem to be last year, but we may get a, a letter from the auditor of public accounts, again, uh, if we do, I'll serve the best I will, too. That's all I have on that, we can discuss that more certainly, as you get a chance to digest this between now and, and next month's meeting. It's gonna certainly be on the agenda again to discuss, or if you have any questions, I would appreciate it in advance, uh, or anytime between now and then. Uh, you have a copy of our safety report, a lot of similar information, we accomplished a lot of goals that he required last year, uh, of us, uh, and you can see some of the other things with regard to that. A big part of it is, is the chemical cleaning, uh, I was able to successfully get some grant funds. We're gonna have eight thousand dollars out of an eighty-five hundred dollar bill paid for to clean up, uh, chemicals in here that have been in here since before, uh, any of us were around. So we did an inventory, Mr. Schmidt and myself, and Mr. Ashburn and Mrs. Kush did an inventory of those, just right around Thanksgiving time. So we pulled all these old bottles out, and inventory, it was a little creepy, and some of it kinda cool, but, uh, so we sent them this inventory, and they said, we'll come clean that up for eighty-five hundred dollars. Well, I got a grant for eight thousand, but I, I think about it, I'll put a size number for you next month. Uh, so over Christmas break, they're gonna come and clean up our chemical storage room, which has been something out of sight, out of mind, that we knew we needed to take care of someday, but I've been waiting for a grant to do that. Uh, Mrs. Hoffman and Mrs. Hoffman and I have been looking at feasibility of a three-year-old PK. We have a facility and we potentially have the staff, so we've got a lot of these things that we wanna work out, so probably gonna be calling a meeting, a committee meeting of the board to come and share some, some thoughts with you about adding a three-year-old PK, we have four, Zion has a three-year-old PK, and that was part of our discussion with the effects on, you know, any local preschools that are offered, including our friends at Zion, and so, uh, we wanted to bring, uh, the board up to speed about our discussions and some framework that we have started to put together there. and some framework that we have started to put together there. Uh, Mr. Tar from City asked me if this, if the school district would be interested in purchasing the ball field concession stand. And that's a, that's city-owned property, it's a city-owned structure. We're the only ones, I think, that use it. And so it's certainly in their best interest to, "Hey, do you guys want this?" The arrangement that we had now is really pretty good. It's a, it's a facility. We kind of, we helped maintain it a little bit, but we had minimal expense. Is it in our best interest to own that? I don't know. Uh, that's for, for you. Do you want me to bring that to your attention, see if that's something you wanted to consider and discuss? And so over the course, maybe the next month or two, that could become an action item. And so start to think maybe about the reasonability and the feasibility of us assuming, uh, ownership of that on the north side of Lincoln Street.
It's still a land with it, or just a building on the ramp, leased land?
Well, that would be a question that I would, I would certainly have to ask you. Uh, we've been contracting with Osmond for elementary band. This will be the last month for that. We're gonna have our, our music teacher that we hired, uh, take over that elementary band, so that seventeen hundred dollar expense to our friends in Osmond that you see. We may have one month, one more month of that, because we're always a month behind. But that was initially gonna be a year long because we didn't find a band instructor, uh, as you recall, but, uh, so we were able to work that out, uh, for her to assume those duties. And there's some meetings out of district, legislative preview with Lincoln was real good, got to meet, uh, Governor Lex Billen. I listened to him a little bit, he's got a lot of learning to do about how schools work, when he talks about school funding and those issues. State Education Conference, uh, that Mrs. Jensen and I went to was outstanding. I don't know if you have any comments about that to highlight certainly our, our student, Lake Medina.
That's what I was telling him before. Clayton did an amazing job, very, very complimentary of our school system and teachers and how, when he moved here, how students welcomed him, and he did a really nice job. He told me afterward, though, he was so nervous, because Grandma was sitting there.
He was gonna make her sit in the car, and I said, "No."
That's a joke.
Because so I went to the foundation, she came in, but, uh, excellent conversation, a lot of the same conversations, uh, it was just, which is fun. Certainly a lot of updates, uh, about things, but, uh, networking and, and, uh, and all that, so, uh, that was certainly very good.
About teacher shortage, Dr. Arlt presented there for that, the opening, and I heard some people talk to you.
Yeah.
He dropped, about, ask you questions and things about that, so that was a good thumbs up for plain you also.
Yeah, just about how, how we need to think about addressing teacher shortage right here at the local level rather than wait maybe for the unit camera or the federal government to, to throw money at something, try to entice or attract more people to the field of education, so. So it, it was certainly very, very good. Um, and then my vacation and sick balance are listed there for you, and that is all I can.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments or topics or anything else for next month? Okay, we are adjourned.